Uh, no. Those who... And I wasn't required. So, uh...
That's not cutting different. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go there. You're gonna signal, come on, tap out.
No.
Or on the hard copy.
You know, I mean, the, uh, the whole pack?
No, 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 just on your...
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's say it's okay, should we get going?
What's this then?
Are you wanting to officially hand it to you?
I haven't, yeah, I haven't. Have I, have I done a meeting this year? I have not.
Not in person.
Not yet.
Since you guys don't recognize me.
Are you ready? We're gonna start recording.
Yes, uh, I'd like to formally start this meeting of the Cordova Recreation Park District Board of Directors on Wednesday, October 20th at 6:31 PM. And, um, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance first, and I think we're gonna have somebody introduce somebody else.
Thank you, I'd like to welcome Management Analyst Rick Smith and CFO Matt Goodell to the podium for the Pledge of Allegiance. And then if you could, please remain standing as we have a moment of silence. And Planning Manager Laura Taylor will lead that portion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so the reason why Rick Smith here is doing the pledge is because he is our Pickle employee of the quarter. Yeah. And what that means is that, that's, that's someone that stood out of everybody, that's someone that stood out. And so, uh, he did a bunch of things the past few months that were amazing. Uh, you remember that surplus sale that we had at Old McDonald Farm? I mean, he's the one that posted on the county site, saw it monitored and all the, uh, you know, saw it all the way through the sale, so it was fantastic. Uh, we had a major IT transition this summer, and Rick made it minor. Uh, he created the RFP and welcomed the new IT firm. And we had a pool being constructed at the very same time, so Rick participated in all the pool construction meetings and did the IT, uh, plan. He also always assists with the annual audit, which we continue to have zero audit findings. And, uh, we trend towards financial health during his three years with the district. He always looks for financial inefficiencies and savings, he finds the best prices, and he does work for parks' fuel, fleet vehicles, golf carts, computers, and even paper clips. And my favorite reason is his personality. You know, I need someone that can handle the highs and the lows, and that can coordinate and juggle major projects and minor tasks. And, uh, he kinda embodies exactly what I do, I, I try to keep it calm and collective, and, uh, Rick's exactly that, and, uh, it's a perfect fit. So, that's why he deserves the Pickle Award of the Quarter. All right, awesome. You didn't bring the Big Pickle Award? You didn't bring it? Uh...
So, why don't we do a moment of silence, and then if you would afterwards, kind of acknowledge that we're doing it, so maybe we take a couple seconds, and if you wouldn't mind?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna start with a moment of silence, then?
Sure.
Okay, and then I'll talk about them. Okay. All right, so, um, you all know John Bendo, our Construction Supervisor and Inspect, uh, Inspection Supervisor, and, um, he is going, his family's going through a hard time, they just lost, uh, his father, um, who was, uh, born in 1932 in Sicily, Italy, um, and passed away on October 7th, uh, 2021 at the age of 89. Um, just this interesting fact about him, his name is Domenico Bendo, his friends called him Dominic. Um, he, uh, migrated, uh, to the United States, um, in his twenties or thirties, but during his working life here, he worked in the family Bendo landscaping business, building parks around the Sacramento region. Um, and so he's a kindred soul, and he will be greatly missed. Um, and so, thank you all for honoring his memory. Thank you.
Now, I'll have the, uh, Danielle Jones take the role.
Thank you, before I call the role, I just wanted to welcome to the dais Shelby Golden, who is a Communications and Management, sorry, Communications and Marketing Analyst. And she has been wonderful with helping us produce the board package, and may also help cover, um, the clerk position when needed. So, welcome Shelby, thank you for everything you've been doing.
Thank you.
Director Danzel?
Here.
Director Yearwood?
Here.
Secretary Reyes?
Here.
Vice Chair Leinbach?
Here.
And Chair Sloan?
Glad to be here. Um, uh, okay. I think it's time now to ask my...
Board of Directors, if they have any disclosure action on the actual items to report? Director Danzel? Director Yearwood?
None.
Director Reyes?
None.
And, uh, oh, sorry, Secretary Reyes and Vice Chair Leinbach?
None.
None. And I have none either. Which takes us to B.
Thank you. Comments by the public on non-agenda items. Members of the public may address the Board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes, it's a violation of state law for the Board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. And at this time, I have no speaker cards.
Yeah. That's great. Well, that brings us already to Item C, the Consent Calendar. And I think on the first item, we have someone who's gonna abstain from the voting.
Thank you, Consent Calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. And this evening, we have three items for your consideration, and I would like to pull Item C1 for a separate vote, please.
So, can I have a motion for the Consent Calendar from somebody?
I move we approve Consent Calendar Item C2 and C3.
I have a motion for Vice Chair Leinbach?
I'll second.
Second from Director Yearwood. Roll call vote.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Reyes?
Aye.
Vice Chair Leinbach?
Aye.
And Chair Sloan?
Aye.
And I just requested a separate vote for Item C1 due to the absence of Secretary Reyes at that board meeting.
So... I move approval of Consent Item C1.
Motion by Vice Chair Leinbach?
Second.
A second by Director Danzel, roll call vote.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Reyes?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Leinbach?
Aye.
And Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Which brings us to D, which is Presentations, which we have none. And we have our Committee Reports.
Thank you, Item E1 is a Standing Committee Report for the Budget and Finance from September 20th, and that is Vice Chair Leinbach and Secretary Reyes served as the alternate for Director Danzel.
Um, go ahead.
Um, it was a short, uh, meeting, but it was a very important one, we had the presentation of the fee schedule and, uh, the recommendation of staff, uh, to be able to, which, uh, to be able to adjust the fee schedule, which I believe we're going to be, uh, voting on, uh, tonight. I think, uh, staff did a good job to make sure that the, the increases in the fees were reasonable and definitely affordable, and, uh, to be able to accommodate our different resident needs, they were also able to create, um, some fee structure changes. Thank you.
Okay, and I really have nothing to add, I think, uh, we're gonna be discussing this item next, anyway, so, thank you.
Thank you. Which brings us to, uh, C2, which is our District Financial Report. No? Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. We're on F? Oh, F1, Adopt Resolution, okay.
So, we've reached the portion of our meeting for the public hearing. And Item F1 is to adopt Resolution 21/22-17, amending the district fee schedule for the Cordova Recreation and Park District.
And, okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the, uh, this meeting at, uh, 6:41.
And I'd like to welcome Director of Parks and Recreation, Jo Nuns.
Good evening, Chair Sloan and members of the Board. Wow, it's been a while, it's good to see everyone's faces live. Um, so I'm back for the second time this year to talk about the fee schedule, which is a good thing. Um, what we're doing tonight is, staff is recommending that the Board of Directors conduct this public hearing and adopt Resolution Number 21/22-17 and approve the amended district fee schedule for the Cordova Recreation and Park District. As you know, the district fee schedule was established to outline user fees and fees for service based on the cost of providing a service. And these established fees include direct, indirect, and capital costs. So, tonight, we just have a few, not too, too many. So, if you turn, um, to page, uh, 25 of your packet, you'll see that we have new fees and adjusted fees that are being proposed this evening. There are seven new fees, and I'll go through those, and I'll also go through the adjusted, and then if you have questions after that, I'm happy to answer those. So, for the new fees, we'll start with, again, on page 25, number one in Aquatics, um, all of our district pools, what we're looking to do is add a swim season pass. So, we didn't do that this summer, just because the pool hadn't opened, uh, until later on into June, so what we've done is established a public swim season pass for an individual which is ages one and up, and the fee that we're proposing is $65. And again, we've based that, um, like we have on previous fees, we've benchmarked that against other park and recreation, recreation agencies. Number two is Aquatics, again, district pools, this is same thing with the public swim season pass, but this is for the family. So, if a family of four would like to get a swim pass for the summer, it's $180 per year. Number three is the swim public season, um, pass, and that's for additional family members, if they have more than four in their family, and it would just be an additional $45 on top of the $180 per year for that fee. Number four is in facilities, it's a food truck permit daily park use, so we have food trucks that, um, call us up and wanna come out to our parks, like Rosemont Community Park, uh, we have some out at Eagles Nest, and so if they wanted to come out for the day, we also have some other food trucks that are interested in coming out to the pools during the summer and setting up shop for the day. We're gonna charge anywhere from $30 to $60, depending on how many food trucks are gonna be out there. And that's, again, a per-day, um, fee. And then we also have line number five, food truck permits, and that's an annual fee. Um, so, um, Eagles Nest, for example, they do it all summer long, so we would charge, um, SACMOFO between $300 and $500 per year, and it would depend on how many trucks they had. Number six in parks, we have bounce house permit without rental reservations, which is $15 per day. Basically, what this is, is right now, when some, um, a group reserves a picnic or a pavilion rental, they can add on, um, a bounce house, and we know that they are having a bounce house, 'cause we ask those questions, then we make sure that the bounce house company has the correct insurance. Unfortunately, sometimes, we have people that, not unfortunately that they show up to the park, but unfortunately, they don't get a bounce house permit from us if they go to a park without a reservation, without a park permit, and then they go ahead and have a bounce house. For safety reasons, we wanna make sure that they have that permit, and so what we're doing is implementing a $15 fee for that. So, they don't have to reserve a picnic, don't have to reserve a pavilion, um, rental, but if they wanna go out and use one of our parks, which is awesome, they can do that, but if they're gonna have a bounce house, they need to go ahead and get that permit from us for $15. And that's just for the cost of doing the paperwork. And then number seven, district-wide, is we have a, um, we have our summer camps every summer, and we've been doing this Teen All-Star, um, Camp Counseling Program, and it's really been, um, a success. And so now, what we'd like to do is even expand it more, so it's kinda like a camp counseling, it's like a leadership program, it's to teach, you know, ages 12 to 15, those kids some, you know, um, experiences within the workforce. And so what we're proposing is, is that they pay about 50% of the camp fee, so if a camp, you know, is $100, we're asking them to just pay $50 to be a camp counselor, and then they get those experiences, as well as some leadership experiences within that. So, those are the new fees that are being proposed for this year, and then I'll go into the adjusted fees, there's just two adjusted fees that we'd like to recommend. Number one is in Aquatics, we'd like to recommend for public rec swim under age one, that they be allowed in for free. And that is, again, benchmarked on, you know, other park and recreation agencies, so we're going from a $1 fee to a $0 fee. And then at the Neil Orchard Senior Activities Center, we have our amazing Green Thumb Lunches that Heather and her staff put on, typically, they have leftover soup, and what they like to do is be able to offer those soups to go at the end of the lunch. And so, right now, the fee is $3 to $5, but that doesn't include an option for someone to take home soup, so we'd like to lower that to $2, which is really that soup fee, to take home the soup at the end of it. So, those are the adjusted fees. The complete amended district fee schedule is included in Resolution Number 21/22-17. The public hearing notice for the amended district fee schedule was published in the grapevine on October 1st and 8th, as required by law. So, all new and adjusted fees will take effect starting tomorrow, if approved this evening. Staff will update district websites, facility signage, marketing collateral, and the active net registration website to reflect those approved fees. So, that concludes my report, I'd be happy to answer any questions the Board might have.
Um, well, first of all, I wanna invite the public to comment, is there any public comment?
I do not have any requests.
Then I will close this public hearing at 6:47 PM, and at this time, I'll ask my Board of Directors if they have any questions for Jill regarding the fee, uh, changes. Director Danzel?
I, I do, um, is it any way possible to start November 1st versus middle of the month?
For the fee changes?
Yes. I mean, because half of it's Aquatics, so, I mean, obviously, we're not running pools right now, so that should, shouldn't be, um, I'm not saying, I mean, we're talking 10 days, I'm, I'm asking, I'm not...
Sure. So, I mean, any fees that we've already collected or any reservations, we won't charge them back, for like a bounce house, for example. So, it's really moving from this point on that we would charge those fees.
Okay.
Whether it's a food truck, which we don't have right, any right now, or the bounce house, everything else, the Green Thumb Lunch, it, it could happen Friday, if they have lunch on Friday, I'm not sure if this is a Friday we have lunch, so, um, I, I don't know if it really, um, would change anything, because we won't go back and charge anyone who already has a reservation in the books.
Okay.
Yeah.
Director Yearwood?
I, I don't have any questions.
Secretary Reyes?
No questions, as I mentioned, staff did a good job in, uh, working with the fee schedule, also in keeping an eye to see, because we do need to be able to, uh, bring in enough funds to maintain our facilities, but at the same time, take into consideration every opportunity to make this inclusive rather than exclusive. Thank you.
Vice Chair Leinbach?
I, I'd actually like to piggyback on, um, Director Danzel's question, and that is, um, when you had the, uh, required notices in the grapevine, did it indicate an effective date of any potential fee changes?
Danielle, do you happen to know? I don't have a copy of what went into the, um...
No, it does not include the effective date in the public notices.
Hmm, okay. Well, I, I sort of, you know, think people should have a little bit of notice when a, a fee is gonna change, so, you know...
We're fine with that, if you guys want to amend it to have the fee changed on November 1st, it's absolutely perfectly fine with us, not a problem at all.
And maybe in future, you at least include language that says, then, if the fees are approved, they will become effective the day after the approval date, or something that comports so that they know what to expect, at least.
Appreciate it, thanks for the recommendation.
And then I'd like to say, when can I get one of those season passes for the pool?
November 1st. Hold on, hold on.
Okay, thank you. Nope.
I have a couple of questions. Um, food trucks?
Uh-huh.
So, events like that they have Kids Day in the park, and the food trucks are there, is this additional fees that they'll be paying to us?
Not for Kids Day in the park, this is, um, so those are special use permits that, that come through our office, and so, like, with the CCC, we would not charge the CCC for those food trucks. So, this is, um, things like when the Rosemont Community Association, they didn't do it in the last two years, but I'm hoping that it comes back to Rosemont in the future, they would do a first Friday where they would have a food truck, or a few food trucks, at Rosemont Community Park, where the neighborhood would come, so this is for those kind of events.
My question would, is referring to that, because if I remember right, they're not parked on the park property, they're parked on the street.
But they use the park for restrooms, for trash? And so we, this, these fees, so the fees that we have in here, um, we have charged SACMOFO in, in, in the past, what we're trying to do is expand it even further than SACMOFO, 'cause we are starting to get some phone calls from individual, um, trucks to be able to do this, but SACMOFO has paid a yearly fee to be out at Rosemont, as well as Eagles Nest. But they do use the park, and so, if they were truly on the street, and they were bringing their own restrooms, and they were bringing their own trash receptacles, fantastic, but they're not. They're using the park, and the park is really the gathering spot, the truck is parked on the street, but everybody goes into, uh, the park to use the park for the food truck there.
I understand your, your point of view, but, I mean, if they were a block away, and people wanna take the food to the park and eat it, that's up to them, trash cans are there, supposedly, always gonna be there, so...
It does put an additional burden on our Park Services, um, department.
So, my next question would be on the, on the, uh, rentable bounce houses, is that usually a, are they electric generators that run those things, and they would...
Typically, the, they will bring, the bounce house companies will bring their own generator?
Uh, and, so that will be if they're gonna run it off our electricity?
Nope, so the $15 is just to make sure that we, as an administrative staff, know that that bounce house company has their certificates of insurance.
Mm-hmm.
And then we also make sure that that organization in that bounce house know where within the park to put the bounce house, you know, locate it in the park, so they don't hit any kind of irrigation valves or irrigation heads. So, there's a little bit of a process when we do have bounce houses in our parks.
A lot of times, I do see those spring up in our parks, and it, what is the, is there a fine involved with, uh, people who do that?
No, we just kindly go up to that group and remind them about our rules and regulations, and ask them to make sure that they go through the, the proper channels next time that they have a bounce house.
Okay. All right, that's all. So, uh, at this time, I'd like to, uh, call for a motion on this item?
So, I moved that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 21/22-17, amending the district fee schedule for the Cordova Recreation and Park District.
Motion by Director Reyes, I mean, Secretary Reyes?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Leinbach, roll call vote.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Reyes?
Aye.
Vice Chair Leinbach?
Aye.
And Chair Sloan?
Uh, aye.
Thank you.
So, that brings us to our regular calendar, which would be G1.
Thank you, Chair Sloan, Item G1 is to adopt Resolution 21/22-18 to amend the fiscal year 2021, 2022 Cordova Recreation and Park District final budgets, and authorize the General Manager to file with the County Auditor Controller. And I'd like to welcome to the podium Chief Financial Officer, Matt Goodell.
All right, good evening, Chair Sloan, Board members. And so, we do have, I guess I'm a little bit taller than Jill, that's awesome, a, uh, couple of modifications in the budget this evening. And so, the first item, 1.1, is for a grant-funded project, it's for the, uh, pathway that's gonna be implemented around Fetterspil Park. It's a grant-funded project for $342,100, and the net impact's gonna be zero, but since it's a reimbursement grant, we have to put in the budget the expense side of it, and so that, that'll be offset by each other. The second item, 1.2, is a request for a budget increase, and this is due to inflation and the cost of, uh, pricing of goods being higher for the irrigation controller projects that we originally budgeted for at Independence at Mather and Veterans Parks, uh, requires about a $2,000 bump. I confirmed with parks that the projects at that price are still a priority, and they agreed, and so they wanna move forward with that. And so, the reason for Board approval on the projects, uh, is because they'll exceed the fund budget for the capital improvement category in 347B, and so we need that amendment done by Board approval. That's my report.
Thank you very much for that wonderful report. Any questions from the public on this item?
No requests.
Nothing. Any questions from the Board of Directors? Seeing nothing, um, I will ask for a roll, for a, uh, roll call vote. Oh, motion, please, sorry.
I'll move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 21/22-18 to amend fiscal year 2021, 2022 Cordova Recreation and Park District final budget, and authorize the General Manager to file with the County Auditor Controller.
A motion by Director Yearwood? And a second by Secretary Reyes, roll call vote, please.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Reyes?
Aye.
Vice Chair Leinbach?
Aye.
And Chair Sloan?
Aye.
And that brings us to G2.
Thank you, Item G2 is to authorize the General Manager to approve a ground lease agreement with SciFi Networks Rancho Cordova LLC, and to install communication utility cabinets in designated parks. And I'll turn it back over to CFO Goodell.
All right, good evening again. And so, CRPD was approached with a very interesting project, uh, it's from SciFi Networks, they're looking to add fiber optic speeds for all the residents in Rancho Cordova. Uh, they've already contacted the city and have a contract with them to be known as a fiber, uh, city. And so, the reason why our district is involved is because to them, it made sense to locate their cabinets in our parks. And so, there are 16 parks that they identified using 18 cabinets, so two parks will get two. And this is what they look like, let's see if we can throw it on the screen. All right, there's a little diagram. There's a better one. That'll work. So they're about two inches tall compared to my hand, like you can see here, but no. They're like our irrigation cabinets. I mean, they don't take too much footprint of space. And our planning and parks crew went out and took a tour with Representative John Marchak to take a look at the locations and pick spots that wouldn't be intrusive to public or an obstacle and would be visually okay, not in the way. The timeline, if all goes well, they want to start next spring and summer in 2022. And they say it takes about two to three boxes per quarter. So it'll take a couple of years to get all 18 in. Now financially, the key component, right, there's two elements to the agreement. One is a monthly rent that we're going to get. It's $350 per cabinet. So if all 18 cabinets are installed, that's $75,000 annually. Fantastic. It includes an inflation factor of 3% as well. The second part is an upfront one-time $150,000 offering in exchange of naming rights and enhancement to one of our park facilities. Staff can bring forward a recommendation for that at a later date, and we do have some ideas. The initial lease is for 10 years, and then it goes up to a total of 90 years. I don't think we'll be around, but we'll see. Overall, staff recommends this project. The benefit the residents will receive in the connection capabilities, plus the ability for the district to invest back into the parks over those 90 years outweighs any kind of concerns that we foresee. So in the audience tonight, I think John, is John, yep, we have John Marchak. So he's the project manager for SciFi Fiber City. And so he can help out with any technical questions if there are any. And that's my report.
Thank you for that report. Questions from the Board of, oh, questions from the public?
I have no requests.
No requests. Any questions from the Board of Directors? Director Danzel? Director Yearwood?
I just have one question. So these boxes, would we be able to consider, would they be able to be wrapped in something like the city's been doing with utility boxes to make them look more aesthetically pleasing?
We did ask that question, and the answer is no.
Oh, you can't?
We can incorporate some landscaping or shrubs or other enhancements around it, but not necessarily on the unit itself.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there'll be?
Oh, that's too bad.
Gray metal boxes?
I don't know if we get a choice of color, but yes.
Okay.
My comment was the same. I said, that's too bad because they look hideous. I mean, you know, and I mean, a lot of times...
Hey, John's in the audience. I don't know if they look hideous.
They look hideous. But I mean, most of the time, people don't know what it is. They think it might be this electrical box or whatever, and it looks scary. But yeah, I did see some of those boxes, like the one on Church of Christ or something. And it's, at least it's got some art on it, and it looked very nice. And I thought if there was some ability to even just put some approved art to it.
Somebody will put unapproved art on it.
So...
Because if we don't do it, someone else is going to do it.
Well, yeah.
So I can speak to that. We did actually ask that question as we were discussing this. And the type of unit, the way that I understood it was, it was not approved by the manufacturer as an ability or tested to have anything wrapped on it. And so therefore, it's not an option for us to include that versus the ones you see out in public right now when they manufacture these types of boxes. Some are conducive to that, some are not, and this is one of those that are not, unfortunately. So it isn't even an option from what I understood from SciFi.
That's the only thing. I thought it'd be nice to beautify. Anything of this to beautify our parks, not just glunk.
So with that, we were concerned about that as well. And so they did say that they would work with us if there are certain boxes that are a little bit more intrusive looking than others. There's an ability to do screening, like some landscaping around it to make it blend a little bit more than just having a box in the middle of, you know, one of our landscapes. So there are options that we're exploring. It depends on the park location, depends on the park itself. But we did make a very conscious effort to make sure that we were not, you know, putting it in the sightline of a resident who might be looking out their beautiful bay window to a new utility box. So we were very thoughtful on that. We actually did a tour with SciFi and identified strategic places to land them, so it would be less, you know, visually intrusive to any of the residents that are around that particular park.
Vice Chair Leinbach?
Well, to Director Yearwood's not really a joke, they're going to be painted whether you like it or not. So I'm assuming if they're painted with something you don't want, you're able to paint over things. So if you can paint over graffiti, why can't you paint them?
I think it wasn't paint, it was the wrapping, the art wraps that go on some of these utility boxes.
I mean, anything, whether it's painted or whatever, if it'd take that.
I'll defer this to John, the SciFi consultant, because the only thing that we were aware that the art wraps that are out there in the community right now were not eligible because of the type of material that goes on them. But painting them, and if we have a graffiti problem, is there a way for us to graffiti abate them so we don't have that issue?
Right. If we do get graffiti on them, is it our responsibility and our expense to keep cleaning it up, or what?
No, it's not.
Oh, there you go.
SciFi will do that. And so the whole thing is, is we've talked to the manufacturer. I don't understand why you bring up valid points about the cabinet and painting it or putting a wrap around it, but can't do the wraps. And they've said no to the painting. It voids the warranty on the cabinet. And I know our management executives are still questioning that because we're going to build out to a lot of cities, and this question's going to come up again and again. So this is not going to be the first time it's being asked. We do know, and we understand, the cabinets will be graffiti, graffiti will be placed on the cabinets there.
Right.
With that being said, we are going to have paint. We'll have a local person, but I'm also local to the area as well. So if I get a call from Matt or somebody else within the Parks Department says, hey, we've had this area graffiti, can you come back out? We're going to have paint that's specific to the cabinet that the manufacturer has approved for its use. And basically, we'll come out and we'll make paint over it. So I just don't understand why there is a no use of paint or wrap around the cabinets. The manufacturer has stated that, and that's their warranty.
Thank you.
But I will look into, again, I'll push back with our executives and let them know that is still a concern.
And it's good to know the responsibility, should it get vandalized or whatever, that it's not quite our responsibility so that it's handled properly by SciFi.
Yeah. Our whole concern is to make sure that when we put these cabinets in there, they're not a visual disturbance to the area. I've worked with Matt's team, and we've gone out with Christina and Jim, and we've looked at places to place these cabinets. So they're not standing out. We put them in the bush area. We can put some bushes around them or landscaping, fencing and so forth. So they just kind of blend in with the surroundings.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Ms. Terry?
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Sure.
First of all, do they make any type of a noise, humming or any type of a sound?
This is a good question. I don't know the answer to that. I will check into it. My understanding is the fiber's coming in, it's run on electricity, it may make a slight buzzing sound, maybe like what we're hearing a little bit here with the lights and so forth. I'm not aware of that. I can look into that, though.
The next question would be, anything on here, could anybody get hurt?
No, not to my knowledge, no. And that's the whole other reason is we put them in the shrub areas and off the landscape. So, you know, kids are going to be in the park riding bicycles and so forth and running around. Want to make sure that they don't run into the cabinets, so we put them out of the way as much as possible so they're out of the public view and then also out of the traffic areas as well.
Okay. This is my one last comment, and it's sort of a far-fetched comment, but I'm gonna, I heard someone, I heard you say that they want to make Rancho Cordova a SciFi fiber optic, whatever, city.
We call it Smart City or Fiber City, yes.
So we're, as a district, we are benefiting only people who live in Rancho Cordova, not the rest of the district. So that could easily, could that spawn, I mean, this is just an idea, could that spawn into someone funding a facility on our property and say it's only for Rancho, only for Rancho Cordova residents and not for Gold River or people out?
It's only parks in Rancho Cordova, though? So it's not like it's in parks in Rosemont or the county side. It's all in the city.
Right. But are they going to, are people in Rosemont and people in where I live and people in Gold River going to say, that's not fair?
Well, maybe we'll expand.
Well, and see, I'm not privy to all those agreements and how they come up with identifying which cities are going to be built and so forth. And if the cities approach SciFi Networks or vice versa. You know, we have other cities approaching us, and we're looking at the business model and see how it works. And at this point, we're looking at Yuba City, they're very interested, and the area, Marysville and so forth. But we're also, you know, as part of that, you look at the business economics. We want to provide a service to give high-speed internet to everybody, you know, not just the wealthy people, but we're going to build out to every home in the city limits as well as every business. So everybody will have an opportunity to have high-speed fiber, up to about 10 gigabits for the service, which is considerably much faster. I think most people are getting about 1 gigabit now.
Well, I got Comcast, so I get, Xfinity, I get a lot more.
But this is a direct fiber link all the way through the whole fiber build.
Okay, I'm just, that's, my point is just that, you know, you guys picked only Rancho Cordova parks, which to me is a little bit alarming when I address that.
Well, the contract is with the city of Rancho Cordova, and so the park utility boxes are only going to parks in Rancho Cordova. So unless the city or county of Sacramento brokers a deal for a fiber optic city or county area, then we would work with the county like we did with the city of Rancho Cordova when they approached us to see if that's something that we could accommodate in our parks. But in this case, it is specific to the city of Rancho Cordova's contract.
Is that something that you, people are hardwired into? Or is it all through the airwaves?
Oh, it's not wireless. It's hardwired.
It's hardwired.
So what we're going to do is we're going to do a micro trench. It's going to be about 12 inches deep, about an inch and a quarter wide, and we're going to put multi, small little conduits in there with fiber. And then we're going to build the fiber out to each residence that requests it.
Wow.
It's a pretty expensive venture.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
But typically, most of your facilities are built three to four feet. We're going 11 to 12 inches, which reduces the cost by about probably 2/3.
You're going under streets and all stuff like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you'd be a competitor to Xfinity or Comcast?
So what, well, they could lease the facility. So what we do is we build the conduit, we place the fiber, we maintain the system. So we work with the cities and the park district and so forth. As we said, with the cabinets or whatever we need to do to make sure those cabinets, you know, don't look bad after a year or two years or 10 or 15 years. In the process, we provide the fiber, and then we get ISPs, Internet Service Providers. So they've signed a contract, I don't know with who, and then they can utilize the fiber and bring it right in there. So it could be Comcast as well.
But it's up to you guys to have your sales force go out and get new customers.
That's, yeah, that's correct. Or what we do is we end up leasing it, let's just say through Comcast. They say, hey, we want to use part of your system. So then SciFi makes an agreement with them, and they tell us where they want to go. And then we make sure we build up fiber, what needs to be connected to the homes.
Okay. Okay. Any more questions? Did I already ask the public if they had on this one? I forget. Okay, then let's do a motion on this item. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, ma'am.
I move that the Board of Directors authorize the General Manager to approve a ground lease agreement with SciFi Networks Rancho Cordova LLC and to install communication utility cabinets in designated parks. Second.
A motion by Vice Chair Leinbach, a second by Secretary Reyes. Roll call vote, please.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Reyes?
Aye.
Vice Chair Leinbach?
Aye.
And Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. So that takes us into G3.
Thank you. Item G3 is to authorize the General Manager to execute a consultant services agreement with redistricting insights in the amount of $30,000 for demography services in consideration of transitioning to by-district elections for the Board of Directors. And I'll be presenting on this item briefly. In April of last year, the Board passed a resolution expressing the intent to transition to by-district elections and setting forth the process. Within that resolution, staff recommended that the results from the 2020 census be used to determine the voting districts. As you know, the publication of the census results was delayed from the COVID-19 pandemic. But once those were results, results were released, we did release the RFP in August, and we received two responses. General Manager Larkin and I did the interviews for redistricting insights. We interviewed them on Zoom. They're a qualified respondent with a relevant experience to lead the district through this transition. We did note in the resolution that we intend for November 2022 general election to be the potential initial by-district election. Under fiscal impact, I wanted to point out that the consultant has confirmed that no additional cost will be incurred for additional public hearings above what is included in the proposal. In their proposal states 3, but we are required to have a total of five, and they will not be charging any additional charges for extra public hearings. The result of the recommended action will be that redistricting insights will commence with developing the district's plan for community outreach regarding the districting process and draw voting district boundaries based on the 2020 census data. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the public on this item?
No public requests.
And then I'll ask my Board of Directors if they have questions. Director Danzel? Director Yearwood? Secretary Reyes?
I just wanted to make a comment. Page 73, project overview. Objective is to assist your healthcare system. I think we need, I mean, we're not a healthcare system, right? So Park and Rec District, so please just make that, make them aware of that.
Thank you so much. We did.
No problem. Unlike healthcare. Well, you know, like anything else, I totally understand. It's cut and paste, how they say it. So, but I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have it that way in our...
There's also a jails thing in there, too.
Yeah. That's all. Thank you.
Vice Chair Leinbach? No, I have no comments, questions. So with that, I'll do a motion.
Oh, where are we?
G3, motion.
Go ahead. I have, I'm not, I'm...
I'll move the Board of Directors authorize the General Manager execute a consultant, consult services agreement with redistricting insights in the amount of $30,000 for the demography services in consideration of transforming to by-district elections for the Board of Directors.
Motion by Director Yearwood?
Second.
Second by Director Danzel. Roll call vote, please.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Reyes?
Aye.
Vice Chair Leinbach?
Aye.
And Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Thank you.
So that takes us to G4.
Thank you. Item G4 is to adopt Resolution 21/22-19, approving the park development agreement with Woodside 05N LP for the Arista del Sol Development Project and authorize the chairperson of the Board of Directors to sign the same. I'd like to welcome back Manager Taylor.
Good evening, Chair Sloan and members of the board. I agree with Jill. It's wonderful to be back in person. So nice to see you all. So we have in the audience Michael Fortune. He is a representative from Woodside Homes, who is the property owner of the Arista del Sol Development. And thank you for being here. And so this project is located in the eastern portion of the district. It's immediately west of Grantline Road, and it's south of some of the projects that you folks are familiar with because we've recently opened some parks there. The Cypress Development that includes Labyrinth Park, Cypress Grove Park, and Pyramid Peak Park. And so this project is, right below that Douglas 98 is the Grantline 208 project, and then immediately below that is this project, the Arista del Sol project. The project is approximately 210 acres, and it will provide 740 single-family residential units and a 10-acre commercial office parcel. I have a question. Should I have my mask on while I'm talking? Are you guys able to understand me? Okay. Okay, okay, good. So this project includes a community park parcel of approximately 10.68 acres and a neighborhood park parcel of approximately 2.12 acres. The community park parcel is contiguous with another community park parcel that's in the Grantline 208 subdivision immediately north of it. And so together, those two park parcels combined will make about a 17-acre community park. Okay, so the community park parcel, Lot A, it applies to the Quimby Parkland dedication requirement. And that is the park district's authority jurisdiction area. The 2.12-acre parcel, Lot B, applies to the city's open space requirement. The development agreement between the city and the developer requires dedication of Lot B to the district and uses the definition in that document as a neighborhood green open space. Under the ownership of the district, that Lot B will be defined as a neighborhood park consistent with our district definitions for properties owned and maintained by the district. The district will manage and design the construction of the community park parcel. And that is related to item G5 in your staff report tonight. And the developer will design and build the neighborhood park as a turnkey project. So development of the parks in this project will be funded by at least two revenue sources. The city's Community Places Development Fee and the District Park Impact Fee. And so the way that'll work is that the neighborhood park is being funded with the city's Community Places Development Fee because it was originally, you know, part of the city open space. And then the park impact fee will be collected by the city but passed through to the district for the construction of, mostly for the community park. And then, of course, our park impact fee has a district-wide fee component that may or may not be utilized in that community park. That's yet to be determined as we go through the design process and everything. Now, the park development agreement includes language that allows the district manager to increase the maximum budget of the neighborhood park project with funding from other district sources if needed. Likely, the sources may be the project's in lieu fee payment. There's a .3-acre park in lieu fee payment that needs to be made because they were slightly short on their Quimby Parkland dedication. Or possibly, we could choose to utilize some of the park impact fees that are collected to help augment it. And the reason that we might want to do that is because the amount of money collected from, for the city open space is slightly less. They have a slightly less standard. They don't develop, for instance, playgrounds in their parks. And so we may choose to, as we get through the design process, to want to upgrade it slightly to be more in line with our standards. The project will pay the current park impact development fee in total of $10,535.82 per single-family resident with annual inflation adjustments. The turnkey development of the neighborhood park is substantially funded by the city's Community Places Fee, like I just said. And, let's see, and then we also are going to be implementing a CFD, which is later in your agenda, which is item G6 for Arista del Sol that will include the long-term maintenance and replacement. And it also includes the maintenance dollars needed for that city open space or neighborhood park parcel. So approval of this request will allow the execution of the PDA between the developer and the district. Execution of the PDA satisfies the city requirement prior to approving the final map. This will allow the developer to continue moving forward on the development of the residential project. The PDA allows the general manager to increase the maximum budget for the neighborhood park if the need is determined. And CRPD staff will include a neighborhood park budget update as part of the standard conceptual plan presentation that we will be making to the board as part of our standard process, you know, to get your approval on that conceptual design of the neighborhood park before we move forward with construction documents. And at that time, we'll provide a project budget update for you. Okay, so that's my report and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
First of all, is there any community questions?
I don't have any requests.
No, okay. Director Danzel? Nothing from Director Yearwood? Vice Secretary Reyes?
I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to understand that neighborhood park, open space money from the city. And that neighborhood park is turnkey, which means to say it's going to be construct, it's going to be built or constructed by the developer. Am I right?
Correct.
But of course, the concept, the plan, you know, all that, we will oversee.
Correct. We will manage that and that's what the PDA does. That, that lets us, you know, that puts us in control of the design of what that park will look like.
And of course, we know that we're great partners with the city of Rancho Cordova with getting award-winning parks, even neighborhood parks, to make sure that the residents are happy. Because parks sell homes, I mean, seriously, and communities, especially now when a lot of people have realized that with the whole last year of pandemic. So I just wanted to make sure that it sounds like there's going to be, there could be a possibility that there might be a need to infuse more funds to turn that neighborhood park not just into a, a green space but into truly a neighborhood park.
Correct.
I just want to make sure about that because now we want to make sure there's, the funds are there. You know what I mean? Whether they're in lieu of the .3, if that amounts to it. But it'd be real challenging if we were then to say, okay, well, it's short, the budget is short. Now where are we gonna get it? And then, you know, we tell the city, hey, you know what? It's short and we want to bring it to the standard that we have always delivered parks in the city of Rancho Cordova. And it's, and I think that's something that we have always done, you know, and strive to do. So I just want to make sure that we don't go into this place where now we don't have the money to make that neighborhood park what it's supposed to be. And now we have to get into, you know, and the developer and everybody gets kind of like, you know, into this mess of who's gonna put the money in. So I'm hearing you say that we, the park district, could at some point even be the holder of the, the money bag or find the funds to do it. I just don't want us to be put in a place where we're going to be asking for funds from the city because the, the money they gave for their open space and all that is not going to bring together for both the developer and our park district the, the standard or the quality of neighborhood park, you know?
I totally understand.
So that's my, that's the only part that I'm trying to understand.
Yes, and one of the things that I pride the park planning department on is that we're very good at designing to a budget, right? And so, you know, the first thing we do is we have a kickoff meeting with the designer that the developer hires. And we sit down and we talk about the programming of that park and our expectations. And as you see, there is a exhibit in the back of this PDA that describes the amenities that we typically like to see. And so, you know, just in rough numbers, it looks like we could be a little short. You know, maybe approximately $100,000 short. One of the things about the in lieu fee, there, there's a little bit of negotiations going on and I don't want to go into the minutia of it all. But a portion of that in lieu fee that is owed is actually for community open spaces. They actually were .2 acres short on the Community Places open space and .1 acre short on the Quimby. But in the negotiations we've had, because we had the city partners sitting in with our discussions on the PDA because this was important because of the fact that it was that city open space incorporated into here and decided that that total in lieu fee would be paid to the district rather than trying to split hairs. And so, so there's some contribution going on there, right? And so, you know, I don't have all the, the financial details completely worked out, but I think we're definitely within a realm of reasonableness and affordability that we can deliver a wonderful park without having the district feel the pain of having to contribute anything substantial at all.
And, and residents that buy it and have their expectation and they see all the other neighborhood parks and they're like, why is this just green space? You know what I mean? But I totally trust our, our park development team is always very, very good with, with coming up with some. I just don't want us to be at the point where we have to come back on a smaller amount, you know? Okay.
Well, we'll have all the details worked out when we bring the concept plan to you and we'll make sure that we're presenting a good, solid, viable project to you, so.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Leinbach?
To sort of continue with that, there are a lot of in lieu fees due to the park district, correct? That are being held, have been, been collected by the city but not yet turned over to the park district. And typically, it's turned over based upon a request on the part of the park district for.
Is that correct in terms of the in lieu collection? Is it something that the city holds for us or do they pass that?
No, they hold it until we ask for it. That is the process, correct.
Actually, can I clarify that a little bit? The in lieu fees of recent have been paid directly to the district. But it's the park impact fees that are collected and held in the city and then passed through as we're requesting them.
But it is a potential source for funding any shortfall to make that neighborhood park what it needs to be according to district standards, right?
Correct, absolutely.
I don't have any further questions.
I need some reference here. Lot B is gonna be a neighborhood park, but you're saying it's only gonna be like a green space? It's not gonna be any things in there?
No, it's a two-point, it's a two-acre parcel, basically. You know, the size of, say, Sparrow Park is probably close to two acres. And, and it will have amenities in it that are neighborhood park standard quality. And so, it's.
And then, okay, then Lot A is the big 10-acre park. And that's gonna be, is that like the size of Labyrinth Park?
Well, so it's gonna be, but it's gonna be combined with the seven-acre parcel above it to make about a 17-acre parcel.
Am I looking at it this way? I wish we had something to look at here. Is it across the street?
Here, let me.
America.
I'm gonna do Matt's trick. I've never done that trick with the.
Yeah, the overhead?
The micro fee?
Yeah. Been a long time anyways since I did anything like that. So where is that one diagram? Oh, I guess I don't have a very good diagram in here. I don't think, no, that's gonna. Oh, I know where there's one, in Christina's report.
Page 154?
137, okay. Yeah, that's the one I was thinking of. This is great.
Here, right, okay.
So basically, on the bottom half of this, that's the 10-acre parcel that we're talking about in this PDA right now. And then north of that is the seven-acre parcel roughly that is part of Grantline 208 of which you guys, we did a PDA several years ago with Grantline 208 and a CFD and all that. So these two things combined will make one large community park.
All right, so I'm looking at this now and I see more, you've got some, a school site going in over here. And I see that the, there's an area that's 370 and 371. Will that eventually be built out?
37, I don't.
Those big white areas?
Well, the one on the, there's Americana Boulevard, a future extension that will go down the western side of the community park. And then across the street from the community park is the habitat area that will be in permanent preserve. And then all those little tiny lots are housing lots.
Well, I'm looking at, Terry, what am I looking at here?
Yeah.
What, what's this big white area there? Isn't that bigger than that one?
Looking at the diagram on page 109.
It's on page 109. It's got, it's got a lot of, it looks like there's a lot more building that could go on.
Oh, oh, okay.
And, and if that was the case, is this enough parks?
Oh, okay. Yes, because this is phase one, small lot map. And so those larger areas like 370 and 3, and.
372 and.
Let's see, 370 and 371 will be built out as, they, that'll be divided, subdivided further in future parcel maps with housing lots.
And that will add another park somewhere?
Lot B is on there and that is the neighborhood park.
So that neighborhood, one little neighborhood park there will serve all those homes that are gonna be.
Combine this two are 17 acres, did you say?
Seven acres.
So Lot A is on this, so.
Lot A is going to be 10 acres.
Plus the one.
All right, so Lot A is.
10 acres.
Lot A is the community park.
Right.
And then Lot B is the neighborhood park. And then these parcels will be further subdivided into home lots.
And all those homes, all those other subdivisions are gonna use, basically use Lot B as their little neighborhood park?
Yes.
But it's a pretty long walk if you're building way out of here.
Yeah, you're not seeing the surround, we're, we're not offering the visual of the surround yet.
We're just seeing the Arista del Sol development.
More what's, what's available out there. And I know there's gonna be a school up here, you say, elementary school?
Yes, and that, that's, that school site's in the Grantline 208 subdivision that's to the north. So this picture is only showing Arista del Sol subdivision.
Subdivision.
This one shows that north part is in the Grantline 208 subdivision.
That's an Elk Grove School District?
Chair Sloan, I have a question.
Okay.
May I ask, the Grantline 208 is another development, another developer?
Yes.
So we're, we have Arista del Sol parcel, Lot A, community park that we, that Arista del Sol will contribute to and control, right? And, and we, the park district, will work with that and bring in the continuity with the, the Grantline 208 parcel. That's why you're saying it can go from a 10 to a 17.
Yes.
Because there's the seven.
And so.
So that'll be bigger.
We will control the design and construction management. We'll let the contract for the community park design and construction.
So that then it will be able to get the Arista del Sol and the Grantline kind of as part of, as one? Not just double amenities, because each developer wants, yeah.
And Christina has been reviewing all of the mass grading plans that have come in to make sure that they blend appropriately. And, yeah, we've actually put a lot of work already into this community park in the future. And.
And the, the, that neighborhood, all the schools, schools are Elk Grove? Yeah, okay, thank you. Yep, yep.
Okay.
Boy, that's gonna be an exciting one.
Any other questions? How about a motion? Another question, Director?
Nope.
No, okay.
I was going to try and...
All right, I'll make a motion that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 21/22-19, approving the park development agreement with Woodside 05N LP for the Arista del Sol Development Project and authorize the chairperson of the Board of Directors to sign the same.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Leinbach?
Second?
Second by Director Danzel. Roll call vote, please.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Reyes?
Aye.
Vice Chair Leinbach?
Aye.
And Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Thank you.
That takes us to G5.
Thank you. Item G5 is to authorize the general manager to issue a request for qualifications for landscape architectural services for the design of the Grant Line 208/Arista del Sol Community Park. And I'd like to welcome to the podium Landscape Architect Christina James.
Thank you, Danielle. Good evening, Chair Sloan and members of the board. That was a really great introduction to this line, to this agenda item. I was going to spend a good two minutes trying to orient you to where this park is, but now you know. So the park is a combination of two different developments. That northern, as was discussed, that northern piece is 6.5 acres. That southern piece in Arista is 10.6 acres. So ultimately, this future community park will be a total of 17 acres. The, based on prior master plan documents, the park may include amenities such as soccer fields, little league fields, tennis courts, basketball court, restrooms, parking, play area, splash pad, a large group picnic area. But of course, the final selection of community park amenities will be influenced by community outreach, a space analysis, the district NEXUS study, and our district-wide master planning efforts. The total project budget is anticipated to be approximately 8.5 million. And similar to the process that was used for Heron Landing, the 20-acre Heron Landing Park, we're proposing to select a qualified landscape architecture firm who will lead the public outreach process. Also, they will be responsible for producing the design documents, the construction documents, and assisting with construction administration. By hiring a consultant, we can get outside expertise and also a broader perspective. And we make sure with, as you can see in the attached RFQ, that it's a very fair and transparent selection process for the firm. Once that consultant is selected, we will be coming back to you and bringing that agreement back to you for your approval. It'll be a big contract with the firm for a very important project. And so, just to reiterate, the funding for this consultant will be reimbursed from the Sunrise Douglas Park Development Impact Fee account. And we anticipate that we will be bringing the contract with the consultant before you in February of 2022. After going through an interview process, reviewing proposals, and then there will be a selection committee of different people. The scoring criteria is described in the RFQ. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the RFQ.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the public, Danielle?
No requests.
Public is not coming through here. How about my Board of Directors? Director Danzel? Director Yearwood? Secretary Reyes?
I just wanted to clarify some dates here. You said 2022 was when we would probably have an idea of the conceptual or design that supposedly the architect would...
2022?
Or is that when we choose the landscape architect?
Yeah. So at this, at this meeting, you would be approving us issuing out the RFQ. And then, you know, because of the holidays, as you can see in the draft project schedule attachment A, we wouldn't probably actually be bringing the approval of that architectural agreement before you until February of 2022. And that gives us time to do the interviews, to review the proposals. So, and, and that works with the timing of the project schedule. So you can get a glimpse kind of of the, of our projection of the project schedule, looking at construction really in 2023, 2025.
Okay. Just want to make sure, so these, the park will probably be in construction and not until 2025, like 2026, maybe?
Yeah, again, that, that, it's a big park, so it's like a two-year at least, similar to Heron Landing construction process. And this is just a very early guess at dates.
Yeah. Yeah, because I do remember, was it Heron Landing where they, they were like, we've lived here five years already and there's nothing?
Seven.
And there's six years and there's nothing. And, and we don't want that to happen, you know, to these, to the residents who invest and buy. Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Leinbach?
Just out of curiosity, how close in the, or how similar is the development timeline for Arista del Sol versus Grant Line 208? I mean, is there a possibility that you only get to build half the park in 2023 and you have to wait five years to build the other half?
That's a good question. I'm going to turn that over to...
Mike?
Mike, are you? To Mike LaFortune with Woodside Homes.
Chair Sloan, member of the board. It's good seeing everybody again.
Yes.
Although I can't speak for the development north of Arista del Sol, they are under construction and so they are ahead of us. They already have at-home cells. I can't tell you exactly the timeline for the lots most adjacent to us. But we are already graded, Arista del Sol. We are planning to have all the utilities in and actually start our models in August of 2022. We, we should have our first closings in the first month of 2023. So, once we get started, we want to start the plans for the park that we're going to build as soon as possible. And so we do have a very aggressive timeline. So we will be very supportive to get the homes going as soon as possible. But it's not, you know, it's a two to three-year process till there's enough homes in the area. So hopefully that addressed your question.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I don't have any questions. So how about a motion on this item?
I will move that the Board of Directors authorize the general manager to issue a request for qualifications for landscape architectural services for the design of the Grant Line 208 and Arista del Sol Community Park.
I have a motion by Secretary Reyes.
Second?
A second by Director Danzel. Roll call vote, please.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Reyes?
Aye.
Vice Chair Leinbach?
Aye.
And Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. That takes us on to G6.
Thank you. These are special proceedings. Item G6 is to adopt Resolution 21/22-20, resolution of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District, accepting the annexation of property located in the future annexation area to the Community Facilities District Number 2018-01, Park Facilities and Services Tax Zone Number Two. And I'll turn it back over to CFO Godell.
All right. So this item is a perfect timing after the presentation from Christina for Design Services and Laura for the PDA. So now we have to figure out how we're going to do the ongoing maintenance funding for that. And so, Brian Brown's here and he drove 100 miles. I wrote this very long speech, but instead, since he drove so far, if he wants to provide the...
You heard him.
Brian Brown, Franciscan Associates.
Thank you, Matt. Well, tonight, our goal is to provide some background about the CFD annexation process itself and the specific development that's annexing into the CFD within this item in the resolution before you this evening. As you may recall, CFD 2018-1 was formed in December of 2018. It's one of your newer CFDs. CFD was formed around two projects with the future annexation area boundary, disco terminus with the boundaries of the district. After formation, property within the future annexation area may be annexed into the CFD via a streamlined process. Though this process, the property owner completes unanimous approval form, where the property owner approves the annexation in the CFD and the levying of an annual special tax on the property. The statute does not require that the streamlined process for the annexation of property within a CFD's future annexation area be approved by the board. However, as best practice, the district will bring each annexation before the board and have a resolution approved to ensure transparency and that there's a public record of the annexation occurring. This will result in only one board meeting instead of the standard three to complete the annexation process. So the first annexation of property into the CFD occurred in 2019. The annexation successfully added the Crestly Sunridge Development to the CFD. The second annexation of property occurred in 2020, and that annexation successfully added a portion of the Rio del Oro Development into the CFD. So if we fast forward to today, the resolution before you recognizes the property owner of the Arista del Sol project requesting that their property annex into the CFD and create tax zone number two. Tax zone number two is being created for the Arista del Sol project as a project requires maximum annual special tax rates that are approximately $96 higher for each single-family home than those of tax zone number one. Typically, the city requires new develop, new development to annex into their CFD to pay for park-like amenities such as neighborhood greens. Since the city is not annexing the Arista del Sol project into their CFD, and the district may be responsible for maintaining these additional neighborhood green-like amenities. And for that reason, the district, and for that reason, tax zone number two is being created so that it has a higher maximum special tax rate to ensure that the district has the funding needed to maintain all of the park improvements. Based on the development projection provided by the developer, it's estimated that this project will consist of over 740 single-family homes and 6.6 acres of commercial office space at buildout. So the development is conditioned to mitigate the fiscal impacts of their project, and the property owner is required to provide a funding mechanism for their developments' associated financial impacts to the operation, maintenance, servicing, and capital replacement of these improvements. And by annexing into the CFD, they fulfill that requirement. So the 21, 22 maximum annual special tax rate per single-family home is approximately $542. And that amount may increase by the greater of CPI or 3% each year. And the tax may be levied in perpetuity to pay for services as long as services continue to be provided by the district. And the Arista del Sol development is projected to generate approximately $411,000 at buildout to pay for park improvements within the, within the CFD. That concludes our presentation for the evening, but district staff and I are available to answer any questions you may have related to the annexation of the CFD itself.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the public?
No requests.
Oh, okay. How about my Board of Directors? Danzel? Director Yearwood?
None.
Secretary Reyes?
None, thank you.
Vice Chair Leinbach?
I do have a question.
Okay, what is it?
I thought that the district was going to try to avoid having to take care of green space around parks, such as we do now with VOZ.
Correct. This is not considered a landscape corridor or median. It's considered space that, in essence, the city has contributed to our pot, I guess. And in order for, it was neighborhood green, I guess, originally planned, but it makes more sense for it to come over and be added to our park. So in that, we have to make sure we're collecting enough CFD money to maintain it. Therefore, what the city would have collected for that space if they were able to kept it, we are taking that money and adding it to the CFD amount in order for us to remain whole.
And based on the Park District's standards for maintenance, is that additional $96 sufficient?
That's a great question. Matt, can you help with that?
Yeah, I thought about for the amount of acreage for both parks for $411,000, it should be sufficient, yeah. I mean, it's a two-acre park and, you know, depending on how we're going to build it, obviously, we haven't established exactly what that budget and amenities are going to go in that two-acre park, but that extra $96 times 740 homes should be enough for the two-acre park, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Unless Mike will let me charge more, but it's probably too late for that. No, okay, yeah.
Done.
I, I don't have any questions. So how about a motion on this item?
So I'll move that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 21/22-20, resolution of the Board of Directors of Cordova Recreation and Park District, accepting the annexation of property located in the future annexation area to the Community Facilities District Number 2018-01, Park Facilities and Services Tax Zone Number Two.
I have a motion by Secretary Reyes.
I'll second.
A second by Director Yearwood. Roll call vote, please.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Reyes?
Aye.
Vice Chair Leinbach?
Aye.
And Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to G7.
Thank you. This is another special proceedings item, number G7, is to adopt Resolution 21/22-13, resolution of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District, accepting the annexation of property located in the future annexation area to the Community Facilities District Number 2018-01, Park Facilities and Services Tax Zone Number One. And I'll turn it back over to Mr. Brown.
All right, thank you. So tonight, the goal, just like for annexation number threes, to provide some background, again, on the CFD, the annexation and development itself. So the CFD was formed in 2018 with a future annexation boundary again around whole district. Since formation, there's been three annexations. We just went over two of them that had occurred previously. The third one happened with the last item, and here we are at the fourth. So with this, before you this evening, the property owner, this resolution before you recognizes the property owner of a portion of the ranch project requesting that their property annex into CFD 2018-1, tax zone number one. Based on the development projection provided by the developer, it's estimated that this portion of the project will consist of over 460 single-family detached units at buildout. The development is conditioned to mitigate the fiscal impacts of their project, and the property owner is required to provide a funding mechanism for their development. And again, this will be that mechanism. The maximum special tax rate as of fiscal year 21, 22 per single-family home for this development is $445 approximately. And that amount may increase annually by the change in, the greater of CPI or 3%. And again, may be levied in perpetuity to pay for services as long as the district is maintaining public park improvements in the area. The ranch, this portion of the ranch development is projected to generate approximately $208,000 at buildout in CFD 2018-1 revenues. And that concludes our presentation for the evening. And I'm available to answer any questions about this annexation you may have.
Are there any questions from the public, Danielle, on this?
No requests.
Oh, God. How about my directors? Director Danzel? Director Yearwood? Secretary Reyes?
Quick question. You said it's a portion of the ranch development?
That is correct.
So are there, and maybe General Manager can help us out with this, are there several phases? Who's the developer of this ranch project?
So there are several phases.
Well, yeah, I'll have, I'll have Matt give you a visual of kind of what's going on with this particular assessment. And maybe even Laura can help with how this has been working with this particular development.
And the developer is?
Kehov Nanyan.
I'm sorry?
Kehov Nanyan.
Oh, Hov, okay.
Talking with the representative?
Yes.
Kehovian. They want to do about three to four phases of annexations. Not 100% sure why, but they understand that there's a cost to that and there'll be build for it. But so right now, they have a Phase One, and so that's what's represented in the north corner. So if you took Chris Anthony Road out, that's where it's going to continue into that neighborhood. And so they want to just do it phase by phase as we go along. And so the top one is the, is the Phase One that we're going to annex in tonight. And so the top one is the Phase One that we're going to annex in tonight.
And so, so they go by phase as annexation to the CFD and they vote for that and then they could Phase Two vote not for that? Is that what I mean? What I'm hearing you say, or is it just a matter of then now add it to another CFD?
They have a unique situation. They have adult, active gated community, and they're going to have their own facilities. But we agreed upon a tax rate zone three, which is going to be less because they're still going to have an impact on our parks outside their gated communities, especially the community park right outside of it.
Yep.
And so we haven't agreed an amount for that, which we'll bring next time when Kay Hovian is ready to annex in that area. But I don't know their timeline on construction. Maybe that's why they decided not to. Maybe they're afraid that they would be taxed for undeveloped parcels if they get the whole thing annexed in. They just wanted to take it piece by piece.
Okay, thank you. That's understandable, yep.
And look how flexible we are.
I mean, it's like, I, it just-
It is a little unlike other ways of annexing things in.
Yeah, because normally you take the whole development.
Yeah, we want to make sure we're friendly to the development community, so that's why we're so flexible in bringing this.
So we make that flexible.
Absolutely.
I think that's good because like anything else, you never know how, you know, the market goes too. So you want to make sure that you're not there, as they build their annex. Thank you, that's good.
Vice Chair Lineback?
No.
I have a question. So I'm looking at that Phase One, and there's that little gray area that looks like a good size parcel for a park. Is there going to be parks out there?
Yes.
Where, point to the park.
That, that's, I think there's like a power line that's going in the middle of it. Laura might be able to, yep, thank you.
Is it a power line? Do we want to look for?
Right. Okay, I can answer that question.
So this little trapezoidal piece right there is a neighborhood park. This is a community park that includes a parcel that's under the power lines. And that power line parcel was not granted Quimby Parkland credit, but it made sense and we've been in communications with the, in negotiations with the city and the developer. But, so that will be designed as a one, you know, one cohesive piece of ground and will blend in the community park lines with that power line parcel to make it look good. And the city will have a regional trail that runs through that as well. And then those are the two pieces that the Cordova Recreation and Park District will own and maintain as far as that development. And then, as they were saying, this is the active adult, and they do have a community center building right there and a small neighborhood, I don't know what, the pocket park, I would call it, right here, is part of the, that will be privately owned and maintained-
By-
-by the active adult community.
And is there a college out there or a proposed college out there? It says North Campus Road?
Not that I'm aware of.
So, on the map, I grabbed this from the city's documents, it says future high school below that.
Below, oh, okay.
Oh, that way, yeah, there is a high school down below that, a proposed, yeah.
I mean, okay. Well, thank you. A motion?
I will move that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 21/22-13, resolution of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District, accepting the annexation of property located in the future annexation area to the Community Facilities District Number 2018-01, Park Facilities and Services Tax Zone Number One.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Lineback.
Second. Oh, go ahead, Danzel.
By Director Yearwood.
Danzel.
Director Danzel.
I'm the only one that didn't say.
I think, I got stereo, so I got Michael in the middle.
You didn't see my lips?
I was trying to read your lips.
Sorry.
Second by Director Danzel. Roll call vote, please.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Reyes?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lineback?
Aye.
And Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Well, that's wonderful. Brings us to item H, Board of Directors Items. We'll start off with H1, Training. There's been none. Board Member Community Activities and Meeting Reports. So let's go down the line. Director Danzel?
I'm scrolling, trying to get to it because it's been one of those ones.
I did my homework already.
He did the ribbon cutting pyramid. That's, I think that was it, too. So another park was open, so yeah, I mean, that was, I like seeing that happen. I mean, in the, in the 11 years I've been here, there's been quite a few that I've been part of. Everyone from 112 degrees at 10:00 AM to, you know, pools and everything else, but every park has its own, own special place. And that was definitely a nice, nice little park, and I think it's going to do great for the neighborhood.
Director Yearwood?
Well, I, as well attended the Pyramid Peak Park, Park Opening. Yes, it's always nice to see a new facility come online. A little bummed that I won't be able to see Pyramid Peak from this park, but that's all right.
Painted on that fence.
Yes, so. And then I also attended the Rosemont Community Association, their annual celebration there in the park on October 9th. Little smaller event, but still nice to see everybody out, and we had a nice representation there. Our booth was, stopped by quite a bit. We did a little putting green for the kids and, well, I didn't, I kind of watched it. But, and, so it was nice. It's great to finally have an act, something to go out and go to again after a long time. And I also agree, it's great to be back and seeing all your shiny happy faces, not in a little square on my computer, so. And then anyways, that's all I have.
Secretary Reyes?
I was able to, to watch on TV the Board of Supervisors meeting. I wanted to commend staff that were there and made a presentation. I thought it was very well done. I thought that our legal counsel even was there. And unfortunately, it's still to the very end, the BIA still just wanting to, just not cooperate, right? So anyway, long story short, I did appreciate the presentation. I appreciated their questions and the way staff handled it. And so I guess it seems like the Board of Sup will probably want to get a little more education on the situation, so. Slow but sure, and I think we're doing good. And I want to commend staff answering all the questions and getting all that, and there was confidence in that room, so. And, and what was I going to say? It has been, I wished I had made it to the opening of the Pyramid Park, but I was about ready to do it, but then I got sidetracked and had to do something urgent. So that's it, thank you.
Secretary, I mean, Vice Chair Lineback?
Yes, I too attended the ribbon cutting at Pyramid Peak Park and, you know, ditto. It was nice to see a new park open and nice to be out in the fresh air and, and just to see the park district growing with the community. It was great. I also attended, or, you know, via Channel 14, the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting on September 28th and again yesterday. And with the same result, the BIA keeps putting up questions that seem to need urgent answers that somehow, you know, they don't acknowledge that those questions have been answered repeatedly over and over again. And so when those questions come to the Board of Supervisors, you know, that, to them, these are questions they hadn't encountered before because they didn't, you know, of course, participate in the process that has been going on for seven years. And the BIA comes in with objections for things that have been answered repeatedly. So I think the Board of Supervisors is trying to do, you know, their due diligence. They are getting these questions from the BIA about why these fees are necessary, you know, why the county ordinances have to be followed, why does Quimby have to be followed, why can't we take a different track that means that, you know, people don't get parks in their developments? So it's frustrating. I, I feel for the Board of Supervisors actually because as, you know, watching this, knowing that they're sort of being led down a primrose path, as it were, by the BIA, it's frustrating. And, but they have a job to do. They are having questions about the necessity of these fees, and of course, they have to feel like they've done everything they can to know what the situation is. So I can't see that the result is going to be any different in the end because of how well the district has done, the district staff, working with the county, working with the BIA to come to these numbers. So ultimately, it's a frustration, but I think in the end, there will be success. So, and that's my spiel on that one. I also attended the RCA, Rosemont Annual Celebration of Community. They did have to skip it last year, but everything else got skipped last year, too. It was a little bit smaller, but it was still, I thought, quite successful. And there was great representation by the district, which I know the residents of Rosemont appreciate. And I think it's one of the areas in the district where they actually know the difference between who owns the parks. They know that it is the park district as opposed to the county parks or the city parks or whatever. So, so I know they appreciate the visibility of the park district at their events, and it was a very nice event. And that is my report.
Okay, my report starts on September 20th at the Pyramid Peak Park Ribbon Cutting, which was our seventh park in five years, plus a pool, which is pretty amazing. And kudos goes to everybody at this park district for doing that. I tell you, we're just, we just keep going forward, setting the bar. So I really enjoyed that. That was nice. It was a small little park, but it's a nice little area where people can go read a book, you know, just take the dog for a walk and just chill, which is nice. September 28th, I attended the, via Zoom, the Brekka Steering Committee Meeting, and I'm going to pass this flyer out. You guys can photograph it if you want. There's a, they're going to have their general membership meeting on October 26th via Zoom. And here's the flyer that I was sent in the mail. October 2nd, my wife and a few other friends and children went out to Village Green Park Amphitheater, and we saw the performance by Hummingbird Theater Company of Into the Woods. And it was, I know, there was some trials and things, you know, little obstacles to get figured out, but they finally got launched. This is the second, this was the second performance. It started on Friday. And I got to say, it's, it was really nice. To me, it was a class act. The performances were, were top shelf, and I highly recommend it, although the weather is not looking too favorable this weekend for Friday and Saturday, maybe Saturday, but Friday looks like, if the weather sticks, what it's going to do is a 100% chance of rain. And I doubt you're going to bring your umbrella out there. I doubt they're going to have all the equipment. So it's a, it was a learning process for the district and for this organization. They're a nonprofit, but they wanted to get back into some type of a performance and for the public and for people to see live theater. And it, it was really a nice, a nice, it made our park look really great. I mean, it gave us a lot of, just like importance. I mean, as people walk around, when they see what's going on, they go, wow, this is going on, this park? I mean, you could just be walking around and listen to the performance, or you could pay to get in. But it was just a, I think it's going to be, might be some changes next year or whatever. It was a little hassle on where they store their stuff because they had to go break it down and take it back down to a house that lives in that area. But it was a, there was a story in the grapevine. I hope you guys can read that. It's, I'm just, I'm billing it because it's, it was a great experience. On October 9th, I attended the Rosemont Community Association Celebration, and to, I was, you know, Terry was there and Director Yearwood was there. And it was, it was a little bit more condensed in. They had a lot of neat things, you know, the amenities were just as big, you know, horseback and face painting, and they had some activity bounce house things going on. And they had demonstrations from the high school and the taekwondo, and they had a little three-piece band playing. It was, it was nice. It was a little, little walkway. They just didn't use the pavilion. It was kind of far away anyway, so they brought, they brought everything in a little bit down just on that pathway, which was, was really nice. And I know they're appreciative to have that services out there. That same night, I went out to, at about 9:30 or 9 o'clock, went out to Labyrinth Community Park. And out there, they had the first time ever using one of our parks, the Flower Festival. The Telangana Society of Sacramento puts on this festival every year, and they didn't have it last year because they usually, and they usually have it at schools, and they were looking all over for a place to have it. And they came to the district, and our district employees found them a nice spot. And it was really, it was successful, a little windy, you know, being, you're, you're more open to the elements. There wasn't, they can, there was a little area where you can sit under a little pavilion area, but I would say that it was a very, a success. The, the whole process of that celebration is, through it, if you just get into it, it's very special and very touching to see that kind of stuff, and especially being in one of our parks. It was at Labyrinth Park, and it was, I don't know if you saw some of the, oh, actually, I don't know if you could have because they didn't put any, I didn't see any coverage in the grapevine, but the lab, I took some pictures of the labyrinth, and that's where they had this big ceremony where they bring all the flowers in the center of the labyrinth. And it was really neat to see that kind of network going up, leading up to these people with, in their beautiful costumes and colorful, and it was really, it was really nice. So I'm just going to say again, thank you to the park district for providing that, that facility, and we'll keep moving on. And that's, that's it. I think I've said enough.
Chair Sloan, I've got one more thing I just need to add real quick. So the last few weeks, I've been spending some time watching some public meetings because it's really easy to do right now. And I just want to commend our staff and the general manager for making sure that we look continuously professional. I've watched some meetings recently where staff comes up and they're tripping over themselves because they don't know what to expect from their council, their board, whatever. They have no clue. It's like they've never expected situations to happen. They figured, they gave them the report and that's going to be it. And, you know, General Manager Larkin has always made sure that he gets with us and asks after we get the report, hey, what other questions you have? And because of that, staff always has an answer for us, whether it's here at the diocese, whether it's prior to whatever, whether we choose to ask in general, in general meeting, whether we ask it in public, or public or private. It's always, always done, and I just want to commend the staff here and the general manager for that because it was pretty embarrassing watching some of these meetings this week and seeing staff trip on themselves and not have answers, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I agree, the staff is amazing, and we just-
And we just, we're on the same team. So we, we want to make sure that communication is clear and our responses are something that you guys can feel confident about what you're deciding. So that's important to all of us. It's a high value. So thank you for that.
We have an A++ team here.
Great. Let's move on to item H2.
Thank you. Item H2A is regarding a ballot vote. Sacramento LaFco Special District Commissioner, Office Number Seven, and alternate offices Number Six and Seven. And I'll be presenting on this briefly. LaFco is conducting a mail ballot vote for Commissioner and Alternate. There are three candidates on ballot A for Commissioner and two candidates on ballot B for Alternate. And the board can vote for one on each of those ballots. I did notice in the audience, Mr. Costa, I believe. Would you like to still address the board? Okay. I'll welcome you at this time to the podium. This is Mr. Ted Costa, and you also have his resume at the dais. You'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Okay, three minutes. I'm a director of the San Juan Water District. I have been for close to 30 years. I've been before the voters, I think, seven times. I finished first every time, get about 24,000 votes for that seat. And so I'm trying to have community support. But I am also, the resume speaks for itself. I'm a student of management, and I've worked with Stokely Swanson, the head of the, who was the head of the Management Department at Sac State. I've worked with Dr. Gene Pratt, who's a management professor at, at San Francisco State. And I had the pleasure of working with Major General Sidney S. Novaresi for 10 years, who was the commander of the Fourth Air Base, and learned more about management than that. So I, I see LaFco, remember, LaFco has two employees, okay? They're, they're just massively overworked. They, they really need to get a couple more staffers so that they could do the proper work that they really need to do, that the legislature really set them up. I don't have time to tell you, but I had something to do with Cortez and Knox. But, and so I, I, I offer myself to, to, for that position. And as I can say, I'm not, I'm not running against anyone. I'm not, I'm not downing LaFco. I want to help LaFco take its rightful place in the community. And I, I guess my three minutes is getting close, but I'll just tell you this. My, I do have a commitment to parks, although I never really worked in parks. But my family owned a ranch. They bought in 1917, sending their Thomas. And I'm the trustee of that, of that ranch. And it's going to be developed, and a half of it is going to be a park. So I get skin in the game, folks. I believe in you. And if you go on the Garden Highway, right, when you get off Interstate 5, you see this big oak grove that's there, five acres of oaks. It's been there since John Sutter was there. My dad farmed the place for 60 years. He would never let anyone touch it. It's been turned into a nice little park there. It's really nice. And, but I don't really have hands-on on parks, but I want you to know I'm all for you. And any questions? I'll be happy to try and answer you some questions. So Madam Chair, what I'm going to do is I'm going to just leave because you guys want to deliberate, and you don't want me around here when they're deliberating. So.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out.
Yeah, thank you, folks, very much.
So we are looking for two separate motions on this item. Thank you.
Can you hear us out there?
No.
So we're going to have, is there any discussion from the public on this item?
No further discussion.
So we need to go down the line here and discuss. I, I basically, I know of Gaye Jones. I've known her for many years. I thought she was going to be here tonight. I thought, I heard some rumor. No, you not mentioned that?
She submitted a letter, I believe.
She did. She submitted a letter, which is in your packet.
Okay, yeah, I read that. So let's just go down the line. We'll start with Director, Director Danzel. Do you have any input on this?
I'm going to give you both at the same time. That way, we don't have to do this twice, but we'll make the separate motions. Ballot A for me is Gaye Jones, and ballot B is Michael Hansen. Those are my, my fix.
Director Yearwood, what are your thoughts?
I'm sure like the guy who shows up.
That's a tough one.
I'm safer ballot A, Mr. Costa, and Michael Hansen for ballot B.
Gaye Jones has been, I mean, has been, in as much as she's been with the fire, metro fire, she has always, always been very watchful and very true to the parks, the parks and rec. And she has served us and our community and our residents real well. I, you know, very pleased with her. I was hoping Mr. Costa was in the alternate, too, because I would have put some, you know, help towards him. But at this point, I'm going to go for Gaye, Gaye Jones. And.
Where are we? So.
So I, I really think that Gaye has, has really done real well. I'll, I'll think about the second, but, and then we'll do motions here, right?
What's Chair Leinbach? What's your opinion on this?
I wish Costa was an alternate.
I am in the same camp as Director Danzel, I would say, for the primary seat, Gaye Jones, and the alternate, Michael Hansen. That's my take. Willing to be convinced by somebody else, but that's where I am right now.
Does anybody, so the incumbent is Charlia Moore? Charli, Charlia?
Yeah, Moore, yep.
Does anybody know of Charlia? Is that, why are we?
Oh, she's run some meetings, right?
I've always, you know, I look at incumbents, and it's always seems to be, I don't know how long that person's been there, but I've always.
I don't know that she's been there that long.
I don't know, Michael Hansen.
You know him?
I don't know Michael Hansen, but, well, I guess there's nothing to do but to say it in public meeting. But she was unable to attend several meetings. I wasn't even aware she was on the board for a while. And she had to stand in his chair, or she's the new chair. I'm not even sure which, but.
I think she's the new chair.
I just, I wasn't impressed. I'm just, I can't say anything else other than that. I wasn't impressed. And so I just, I don't know Michael Hansen, but I thought it might be worth, especially as an alternate, you know, because an alternate doesn't take a primary role to try him. That's why I made those choices.
Okay. Well, with, with that, I, it's sort of, you just may change my opinion on, on that, on the, at least a ballot B. Ballot A, I cannot vote against Gaye Jones. She's been a neighbor of mine for many, many years.
And she's served us well.
And she's, she's, you know, she's always been there for a lot of organizations, and it doesn't make sense to replace someone who's doing a good job, you know? She's doing her good job, so still wants to keep doing it.
So.
So with that, do we do a motion? How we, we're going to vote on each one, on ballot A? Our motion is.
So I, I move that we, we vote for Gaye Jones for ballot A, Commissioner.
I will second that.
Okay, motion by Director, Secretary Reyes, and a second by Vice Chair Leinbach. Roll call vote.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Reyes?
Aye.
Vice Chair Leinbach?
Aye.
And Chair Sloan?
Aye. So moving to ballot B. Can I get a motion on that ballot?
Chair Sloan, I move the Board of Directors' vote. Michael Hansen for Sacramento LaFco, alternate, Special Districts Commissioner, offices Number Six and Seven.
I have a motion by Director Danzel.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Leinbach. Roll call vote.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Reyes?
Aye.
Vice Chair Leinbach?
Aye.
And Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we check these on the boxes?
Chair Sloan, can I ask for a five-minute Director's potty break recess?
Okay, why don't you ask?
Thank you.
That's what I'm asking.
Oh, you're asking for one now?
Yes, please.
Oh, you know, later on? Okay. All right, can we, you mind if we take a five-minute break, everybody?
We'll keep Friday because I have both of you guys. And Bob has his own nodery at his office.
Item I, comments by staff on non-agenda items.
Thank you. Item I-1 is the District-wide Monthly Progress Report for October. An alternate over to General Manager Larkin.
Good evening, again. Nice break. All right, I'm just going to give some highlights from the past month. We presented our park impact fees and nexus study to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. And the item was continued until March, sorry, October 19th. So the BIA questions could be addressed again. Yesterday, October 19th, they continued the item again to December 7th. Staff in the meantime will still be prepared to answer any questions and continue to work with the Board of Supervisors and the county staff in order to address any comments, questions, concerns that come forward if it hasn't already been addressed. And you, I, I feel like we've had, literally all stones have been left unturned at this point in addressing this topic. And so we're just going to continue to be present and move it forward as is. I'm currently working with our legal counsel on what our strategies could be, whether they do or they don't. And so I'll have a report to you after the December 7th date, or if not sooner, if we have a different strategy approaching it at that time, so.
Patrick?
Yeah.
Quick question. So the December 7th, you had mentioned something about them doing like a workshop, a training workshop, to, so that they can get educated on this.
Sure. Sure, so it, it's not educated on our fee, it's educated on other county fees that are considered a part of the basket of fees that the developers are asked to pay. They're claiming that the overall fees are too high in Sacramento County. So the Board of Supervisors wanted to go back and evaluate, you know, the fees that the county controls to see about, you know, looking at those if they are too high or in comparison. Uh, but in that, we are, in essence, at the table at the same time they're doing that.
Well, I was thinking that if they were going to be having some kind of a work session or whatever, right?
It's gonna be the day of December 7th.
So then we will be there to be able to address our...
Correct.
Educate them on what's our...
Correct. This is a more of a county staff, county Board of Supervisors workshop about the fees that they can control. Uh, our fee, as you know, was approved by our board, and therefore it goes forward, and really, in essence, what we're asking for them to do is to impose those fees onto the developers, not necessarily to approve it or to set it, because we've already done that through this board. Uh, we're in essence asking them to implement or impose those fees per our approval of that fee and the nexus study.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, we're, we're trying to simplify the communications with the Board of Supervisors, uh, so they very much understand the role they're supposed to be taking at this point. And it feels a little muddied at this point, so we have to go back and, and kind of re-clarify what actually we're doing here, because I feel like, uh, it's been distracted in so many different ways in the last two meetings that we've attended, so. Well, we're definitely planning on doing that, uh, and it's gonna be hopefully some clarity that will help us, uh, get that, uh, board to, um, I shouldn't say approve our fee as much as adopt the, uh, implementation in imposing those fees per our nexus study onto the developers when they come forward with their finance plans.
It is a workshop?
Thank you.
The Board of Directors has asked the county Board of Super, or the Board of Supervisors has asked the county staff to prepare a workshop so that they could see all what they call basket of fees that developers have to pay, so they can scrutinize those fees and see about why the BIA continuously says why they're so high. And so that they, and I think it is a good idea, to be honest.
Yeah, to see the other...
For them to consider that, uh, because, you know, you do want to address the concerns if it is too high. You know, you have to consider the other fees besides just this park fee, um, because we've already demonstrated it's not. We, we're on average with everyone else, not more or less, per se, but on average, and so we have that justification. Maybe the other county fees don't, and so that's why the county wanted to examine those fees a little bit more closely as it relates to this fee, uh, because we've already demonstrated we're not asking for more than for anyone else uh, that's in this region, including South Gate, Casunnes, uh, and our partners, uh, in this area that we've benchmarked, so.
What time would that be on December?
Uh, right now, we don't know. Um, it is just tentatively continued this item, so they don't have to do another public hearing. So it's a continuation of that public hearing item to December 7th, which will include a workshop before this item comes back for consideration. Um, so, we'll do our best in trying to clarify a letter to the Board of Supervisors about what our back-to-basic intentions are of being here in the first place, which seems to have been clouded, as I mentioned, so. Uh, so that's been an interesting experience. Uh, we've executed a contract with Lew Edwards Group to determine if there is a public support for a more fiscally sustainable approach for funding the villages of Zinfandel, the VOZ, uh, CFD. So LEG will provide project lead services to determine if there is a viable public support, and this approach will assist in developing a strategic plan as to whether or not we choose to move forward with possibly putting a measure on the 2022 ballot for the VOZ assessment. We have a new, if you haven't met him earlier, part-time office assistant receptionist clerk two, uh, so please welcome, he's in the back of the room, Eddie Triste, to the district.
Welcome, welcome.
Eddie brings many years of executive support experience from the nonprofit sector. He is located at the district office and is managing administrative functions as well as assisting the clerk in multiple divisions, so welcome, Eddie. He's a nice addition to our office. He brings his candy.
But not the board?
He's not there yet. Take note, Eddie. All right, so, uh, also, our records management program, the annual notification has been sent out to the offices of record. Uh, records will be starting to be compiled and records and retention destruction documents, um, will be sent to Danielle, who is the master of the records retention program. Uh, so this will actually be the first round of implementation since the board adopted that records retention policy. Uh, so, awesome, we're excited to actually get that going. Uh, some upcoming events on November 3rd, the PMRID Oversight Committee will be held. Uh, we did have an orientation with two new members of the PMRID Oversight Committee. They, uh, replaced Ryan and Sandy Hicks. Um, and there are two new members who we really enjoyed, uh, meeting with them and orienting them to the responsibilities of being a PMRID Oversight Committee member, and they're very enthusiastic. So I think great additions to that group, and I'm looking forward to seeing what they can bring to the, the, uh, committee. Uh, also, November 10th, there's public information meetings on Fetterfield Park walkways. As you know, we just got funding approval for that project. Uh, we are planning on going out to that community, actually having them come to us. Uh, we're gonna plan on having a community outreach meeting, information meeting about the project that's been approved. We're gonna host it in our conference area upstairs in our office, and it will also be available via Zoom for that meeting. Um, we're very excited about bringing that forward, and so is, uh, Angel Ball, who is the one who advocated for that. Uh, we're, we're really looking forward to kicking that off and improving that, that area. Uh, some capital two, capital, new capital projects were added to the CIP plan. Riviera East Park Cleanup and the Cordova Community Pool Replacement of Hose Bibbs. Uh, no amendments at this time, however, the Fetterfield Park Pathway Project, uh, was grant-approved, like I just mentioned, and will require a budget amendment like Matt had brought forward earlier in our meeting. Uh, an independent audit service for fiscal year 21, 2025. Uh, the Budget and Finance Division is receiving inquiries from potential firms. The deadline for proposal submittal is Thursday, tomorrow, October 21st, at noon. Finance plans on recommending the most qualified bidder at the November board meeting. Uh, we mentioned about the sci-fi, uh, network system that is, uh, exciting to get that off and running. COVID relief, we have a finance submitted, a $76,000 plus in unexpected expenditures during the pandemic. Hopefully, the district can recoup some of those losses through the program designated for special districts. So that funding availability came forward. We were not eligible when cities and counties and all these other, uh, entities were, uh, getting this COVID relief funds. They did actually pass one specific to special districts. The open window for us to apply to it, uh, was pretty short, but we landed it. We'd been tracking this all along, thank you, Matt and Rick, and we submitted that, uh, reimbursement to that program. And let's just cross our fingers that we get the full amount of six, $76,000. It is dependent on whether you apply or not, so if you didn't apply, don't expect anything, but of course, we applied, so.
Good job.
And we were smart enough to track it the whole time, even though they thought I was crazy. So, all right. Uh, the quarterly staff recognition barbecue drive-through, uh, this year it was a sports theme, so like tailgate party. Uh, staff on the pickle committee, uh, served up some barbecue and popcorn. Chase was at the, uh, little gazebo or the, uh, kiosk handing out popcorn as they were coming in. They had hot dogs, potato, uh, salad by the famous Andrea, uh, chili, watermelon, and cookies. We honored Rick Smith earlier. He is the employee of the quarter. And then also, the Department of the Quarter Award went to the aquatics maintenance team for providing a clean and safe aquatics facility all summer for our community. The award was presented to Facility Supervisor Gary Atchison and Park Maintenance Worker Two, Jamie Brown. The Cordova Community Pool Replacement Project, we are struggling to get our plaques installed on the building. Uh, there are a few remaining items that are still in need of being completed by the contractor. The contractor and the architect from LPA have been coordinating on the mounting of details of the dedication plaques. Unfortunately, the contractor has not yet agreed to a mountain method, which has delayed the installation of the plaques. Actually, Laura and I were out there with Jill today, um, and it is determined it is planning on going into the same places as it was noted at the, um, the grand opening. Uh, now it's gonna unfortunately possibly cost us a little bit more, but it's important for that to be landed in the right place at that facility. Uh, the other options that they were proposing are completely inappropriate, and I want it on that panel like we had discussed, so. Um, we may have to pay a little bit more because we did add another plaque to that design, that original design. Uh, but still, I think it's important for us to have that, uh, recognition plaque in the honor at the entrance of the facility there, so.
Is the issue that they can't drill into that?
They're gonna have to take, take down the final panels, I think, banana panels? The panels, the, uh, orange, burnt orange panels. All the way down, they have to go back into the concrete slab behind it, drill it out, and then mount it, put them out, it, it's a big thing.
Can't just glue them on with drill-a-goo?
No, 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 no. So, we're gonna do it right the first time, um, and, you know, unfortunately, um, this has been more of a hassle than it really should have been, in my opinion. But at the same time, um, they are not gonna be receiving their funding back until these are completed, uh, as per our contract. Right, Laura? So, we also have, of course, a lot of development going on, as you can see from tonight's meeting. There are seven, uh, development projects in queue.
Wow.
I know, and it just keeps rolling, which is exciting, but yet, our park planning and development staff are incredible. They just roll with it and are responsive, and they're on it, so I could not ask for a better staff for that.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Yeah.
What is Stone Creek Village?
Where's that page?
Just curious.
I'm really excited about that project personally, because I live in that neighborhood right next to it. So, basically, it's the commercial lot that is, um, south of Bear Hollow Road, um, and on the west side of Zinfandel, that big vacant lot there that's, um, and so, basically, half of it, it's gonna be small, single-family homes, the southern half of it. Um, a quarter of it, the next quarter of it will be, um, multifamily apartments. And then the, the part closest to Bear Hollow Road is gonna be a, a commercial, um, area with a few pads that, that they're bringing a, um, sprout grocery store, as well as a gas station and a couple other things there.
A gas station?
Well, that's not guaranteed yet, but that's what the, uh, the, the very corner one is supposed to be, but right now, for sure, the sprouts, but the other commercial pads, there's not that, there's only like two or three other commercial pads that, you know, one's intended to be a gas station, but they don't have a lease.
So did they change the, that lot? I thought that a whole lot of, at one point, it was supposed to be a shopping center or something. Did they rezone some of that? Do you know?
Well, I, um, I don't know what it was originally planned to be, but it zoned to be, you know, the multifamily and the, um, commercial retail part, it's always, I think they have to do a zone change for the single family, but I'm not positive about that.
Yeah, okay, because I saw the fence thing up there, I just didn't know that's what it was called, so.
Yeah.
All right, just curious about my old neighborhood. Thank you, my old neighbor.
Sorry, no trade or joke.
So that is exciting, and, and you know, a lot of nuances we're working out with the city right now, because there are some apartment complexes coming in that we're trying to figure out, what do we do with this? And so, you know, working with Laura and the city staff, um, we're gonna figure this out so that we make sure that uh, there is a compensation for these apartment complexes going in related to the impact it would have on parks uh, and potential park impact fees for those types of developments, which we haven't necessarily dealt with so far, and it's kind of a new venture that we're uh, gonna work hand-in-hand with the city on making sure that that's, uh, something that we're not taking on without the impact being realized and funded, so. Uh, more to come on that. Uh, we found out actually yesterday at the Board of Supervisors meeting, silver lining, that apparently we got funded for the Rosemont Community Park Tennis Court or Sports Court renovation. A portion, correct, so $139,000 was pending, according to yesterday's meeting. Um, it looked like that notice of finance or notice of, I guess it's finance, was issued and they approved it, so we should be expecting a call from our friends over there for that portion of it. Now, notice that there are also other fundings that we're waiting for in order for us to actually do the project. Uh, and we're still waiting on those pieces, but it's a really good step, uh, and hopefully the influence on those other funders to know that a portion of it already is funded, so. That's exciting. And also, let's see, Cordova Community Council Waterline Project in Hagan Park. Uh, Inspector John Biondo is managing the design and installation of a project to increase the Fourth of July's event access to potable water connections for food truck vendors. The installation work will occur in the next couple of months. Uh, and also Sacramento Valley Live Steamers, uh, Engine Storage Building. They have submitted plans to add an engine storage building east of the Hagan Barn. So your PD staff is in the process of reviewing the project proposal. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our awesome Director of Parks and Recreation, Jill Nuns.
Well, thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, Cordova Golf Course had another amazing month. Um, so proud of the staff again for continuing, um, to keep that course in the best conditions, even though we're not getting much rain. So we are hoping for some rain this winter for sure. Um, a little Beach Hut Deli update, it's not much of an update, but it's an update. Um, they're in the final stages of their health inspection, so they submitted that to the county, so hopefully they should hear back soon. And then we'll go from there. I still cannot tell you exactly when they're gonna open, so, uh, hopefully soon. Uh, Parks is busy getting ready for the winter, so, um, we are winterizing our parks. And again, Parks is also hoping for some additional rain this winter to help out, uh, with our grass and some other landscaping that could use some additional water. Um, but they're busy doing that, as well as Gary and his staff are on a roll right now, restriping a whole bunch of parking lots. Um, I think I've, um, I've opened up a, a, a part of Gary who used to be a painter, and he's all excited about painting now, and so he's painting everything, which is fantastic, and next month, we'll have a picture for you of, um, a basketball court that he has repainted, and his staff, of course, have repainted at Prospect Hill Park, and it looks fantastic. The court needs some repairs, but the lines look fantastic, so we're getting somewhere. But Gary is definitely on a roll right now, and he has a new toy, and he's been playing with it, and he really loves it, so. Our lines will look fantastic throughout the parks. Um, in recreation, um, still going strong for the fall season. Um, I'll let you read through, we have lots of youth programs going on. We also, um, thank goodness, we're able to host the youth NFL Flag Football League again after taking a year off for COVID, um, so we're back in our season with the Flag Football League. We're obviously very happy about it, we have 104 players registered, um, which is fantastic, so. They play on Saturday mornings over at Heron Landing Community Park. A hideout team program is going strong. Super excited about our new van, so we're able to pick up kids, which is fantastic, so thank you for that. And the membership is currently at 31, uh, teens intending from those, you know, from our various schools, but the van has been a huge help, so. Again, thank you, um, for approving the funding to, to get that van, and thanks to Rick for, for getting the van, which was a little bit of a challenge, but thank you, we appreciate it. Aquatics, um, sad to say that our pools are closed, um, for the season, and we will reopen in February when the high school will come and start practicing, um, at Cordova Community Pool in February, followed by our Blue Marlins and Cordettes in the spring, and then we'll open back up as normal for the summer season. Lots of lifeguard instructing, um, classes going on, swim lessons have ended. And then our swim team, um, this year was able to use the Cordova Community Pool, uh, Pool in the fall to do some fall clinics, which is pretty fantastic, so we're utilizing the pool, um, to the best that we possibly can, so it's exciting to see swimmers there even after Labor Day. Had lots of events this month. Um, NOSEC is continuing with all the events that they did prior NOSEC is continuing with all the events that they did prior to COVID, and, you know, the members are just happy. So we did have a Membership Appreciation Day on Friday, August 27th, so the members came out. They were, they bought their lunch, and then we went ahead and offered them a free banana split. So right now, we currently have 269 active registered members, which is pretty darn good, if you ask me. Especially after, you know, a scary time with COVID. It's nice to see that everyone wants to come back and get engaged again, which is just, that's exactly what our center is made for, so we really appreciate that. We had Cheeseburger Day on September 15th. Sounds pretty young. I'm hungry right now. Cheeseburger would sound good. And then on Saturday, September 18th, we brought back our Doggy Day in the Park at Hagan Community Park, at the Dog Park. And we had about 150 community members. And of course, what it's all for, the dogs, about 200 dogs came out and enjoyed the festivities. So thank you to Heather and her staff for putting that on. Adult programs are going. We still have the Green Thumb Lunch. Like I said, lots of trainings. And then also included in your packet, I reported out last month, or Shelley Blanchard reported out on the Fourth of July Celebration. She gave us a recap of their financials. We didn't have those financials to submit last month, so I did get those from Shelley Blanchard. And so on page 257 and 58, you'll see the financials from the Fourth of July. And then marketing communications, obviously, part of marketing communications is making sure that we get our new park opening, which was the Pyramid Peak Park Grand Opening, out to the community so they know that we had another park opening. So we were able to do that through, you know, our website as well as a grapevine article. So that's that report. I will go over the special event invitation. Like Director Salone had already mentioned, the Annual General Meeting hosted by Breka is now going to be a Zoom meeting on Tuesday, October 26th at 6:30 PM. We do have a Halloween party at the Neil Orchard Senior Activities Center on Wednesday, October 27th at 11:30 AM. We have our annual Halloween at Hagan, woo! So Halloween Hagan is back at the Hagan Community Center. We did change up the times, and I had mentioned this already, but we changed up the times from 3:00 to 6:00 PM because we're not going to do anything indoors this year, so we're still going to make sure that we're being safe. So all of the activities will be outdoors, and we wanted to make sure that we could do that in the daylight for safety reasons. I've already talked to Board Member Director Michael Yearwood, and you are going to do a trunk and treat. So we look forward to seeing you out there. If anyone can join Director Yearwood for the trunk or treat. He'll get his application in, so enjoy, enjoy that activity. Yep, so we appreciate it. We do have our annual Veterans Day Celebration at the Neil Orchard Senior Activities Center on Wednesday, November 10th at 11:30 AM. If you have not had the chance to come to this celebration, I really encourage you to do so. This is one of the events, the highlighted events of the year. It is, it is a special day, and the staff and the participants enjoy this day and feel appreciated. So if you get a chance, if you have some time, come out to the Veterans Day Celebration on November 10th. And then back by popular demand as well is the Cordova Community Christmas Tree Lighting. So they lit the tree last year but didn't have the celebration, but the celebration's back this year. So it's hosted by the CCC at the Village Green on Sunday, November 28th from 4:00 to 7:30 PM. We will have a booth there, basically. So Shelby and a couple other team members will be there representing CRPD, but if you've ever been to that event, it is a spectacular event. So if you get a chance to stop by the Village Green on Sunday, November 28th, please do so. And on page 260, there's an actual flyer for the Cordova Christmas Tree Lighting as well. And with that, that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you for the wonderful report. Okay, informational items, item J.
Thank you. Item J one is the Articles Correspondence and Public Outreach. We do have the two articles, the two blog posts, that one legal notice for our public hearing. We also received another really nice letter from Folsom Cordova Unified School District about the donations, so thank you again for those. And we have two newsletters. And then your calendar is on J two.
J two, calendar. I think it's on a different email, is it? Calendar. Let me see, calendar's on the next one up, okay. Okay, great. Well, let's see, what does that bring us now? It brings us to J two. No, it didn't, J two. So are we done?
Yes.
There's a word here, it's adjournment. I would like to adjourn this meeting into the woods. And I'll see you again the next time we meet, which I'm not sure when that is. It's somewhere in November. Is that going to be my last board meeting as board chair in that November? Okay, I want to savor this a little bit longer. I now, what, let you, what?
9:04.
9:04? At 9:04 PM, this meeting is adjourned.
Nice to see everyone in person.